So, you're recommending an appeal? Am I that right? Did some new evidence come to light?
Yui Momia told us some things. Like how you faked your alibi for Mikoshiba's murder. You wanted the sexual battery conviction, right?
Well...
Your goal was to avenge your son and humiliate the law on a grand scale.
I have no idea what you're talking about.
Ahara-san, we have a much better grasp of the situation than you think.
And what exactly have you grasped?
Like Yagami-san just said, you're innocent. As far as the harassment goes. As your lawyer, I'll file for an appeal. And we'll make sure the world knows it.
Thanks, but no. I'm scum of the earth. A pervert. The prosecution and the judge made that very clear in the verdict.
On the day of the crime, October 7th, at around 6:30 AM, you were in Ijincho, not Tokyo.
Baloney. I was relaxing at home.
Except that you weren't.
Oh?
You wanted to give the man who pushed your son to suicide the beating of a lifetime. And you'd miss out on that opportunity if you were at home, which is why you were in Ijincho instead. Isn't that right? You and Kawana's former student staked out Mikoshiba's house until he left. Then you dragged your prey into a car and brought him to an abandoned building in Ijincho, which would later become a murder scene. Every bone on Mikoshiba's fingers was broken. Remembering how he pushed Toshiro-kun to his death, it's no wonder you'd go that far. You tortured Mikoshiba without a shred of remorse. You inflicted no small amount of pain and terror. There's no way you weren't there. And I'd put my money on that.
And then...
You need the whole play-by-play? Even though you already know it?
Oh, not at all. I'm just fascinated by this outrageous little story.
As for what you did next after-
Ugh... Okay, and... Uh, hang on.
As for what you did next after beating Mikoshiba...
Huh... It's quite a ho-
Without leaving anything on Mikoshiba's body that could be traced back to you, you slit his throat. Estimated time of death was around 7:30 AM on October 7th. You tossed the bloody coat and made your way to Ikebukuro Station, where Yui Momia was waiting.
Are you sure? I was at Ikebukuro by 7:30 AM? Would've been impossible for me to kill Mikoshiba in Ijincho.
The person in the security camera footage in Ikebukuro was a double who imitated your likeness. The identity of whom belonged to Jin Kawana, the handyman in Ijincho. Or maybe you know him by a different name? Former high school teacher Yu Kitakata. So which name did he give you?
I don't know who you're talking about.
With Kawana in view of the security camera, you met up with Yui Momia at Ikebukuro first. That's where you touched the undergarment she had repaired. The police would later discover the trace evidence on your hands and pin the groping on you. Then you made your way to Shinjuku Station. After that, Momia and Kawana acted out the groping as they arrived at Shinjuku Station. Kawana jumped out of the train and Momia chased after him. And then, in the smallest of blind spots in a station absolutely packed with cameras, you were waiting for Kawana, who looked just like you. With the two of you matching, you were able to swap places in that huge crowd without anyone noticing. Kawana handed you the transit card used to pass the ticket gate. Just one piece of hard evidence that places you in Ikebukuro at 7:43 AM. And right after the swap, Momia started calling for help. After that, well... We've all seen how the news reported it. You were caught in a public place with plenty of witnesses.
An active-duty police officer arrested for sexual battery, the public outcry was very clear. As a result, despite it being your first offense, you were actually tried and convicted. The consensus is that it was a fitting punishment for someone so heinous. Even as your lawyer, I felt the same.
Have some confidence in yourself, Shirasaki sensei. The prosecution, the judge, and a lawyer like you all laid out the evidence in court and found me guilty. I'm in no position to doubt you. And I've long accepted the ruling that Toshiro was never bullied. There's nothing I can do but abide by the rule of law. Right? That's all I can do! Right?
I know what you're trying to say. You carried out the justice that the courts wouldn't, right?
Everything my son went through was passed off like it never even happened. School, the teachers, and yes, the court. They all dismissed the reason he died.
That's when Kawana came in the picture, telling you Toshiro-kun had been bullied. But was it Kawana's words that suddenly made you want to kill Mikoshiba? Because all of his fingers were broken while he was still alive? Was that really all just your pent-up rage?
What do you have to say, Ahara-san?
Did Kawana really tell you? You found enough motive to murder Mikoshiba on hearsay?
Hmm...
No. That doesn't sound right at- Posts on the internet specifically named Mikoshiba as Toshiro-kun's bully. Is that why you did it?
Hmm...
Actually, Yagami-san, Mikoshiba wasn't the only student to be accused of the bullying. He couldn't have narrowed down his target with the information available on the internet.
Oh... I guess that was- Did Toshiro-kun ever tell you about the bullying himself?
My son never confided in me about any of that.
Then how did you know there was bullying going on? Why else would you murder Mikoshiba in cold blood? Was Sawa-sensei the one who told you the truth? She was the only person Toshiro-kun confided in. You had to have heard it from her, right?
Nearly hit the nail on the head, as they say.
Nearly?
After my trial, she confessed she knew about the bullying. But only to her old teacher over the phone. She had no idea she was being recorded.
What?
Kawana-san let me listen to that recording where I learned Sawa-sensei had been muzzled by both the homeroom teacher and the lawyer. That was the proof of Toshiro's bullying I'd wanted all throughout the trial. After hearing Sawa-sensei's words, I finally understood. They pushed my boy over the edge.
Was there no other evidence of the bullying? Like a diary of Toshiro-kun's or something of the sort?
Nothing. Toshiro never talked to me or my wife about the bullying. And that was... Probably... He was bullied in middle school too. Kids would throw his pencil case around or hide his books. When I heard about it, I chewed him out. "They walk all over you because you're weak." "Gross spine!" I told him.
I take it that was the wrong approach?
Yeah. I can't imagine how much courage it took for him to come forward about his suffering. I'm sure he felt ashamed about it. And I should've listened when he pleaded for help. I should've told him I was proud of his bravery. But instead, they pushed him away. And in the end, Toshiro tried to make sure he never showed weakness to us again. No matter how much pain he was in. He went to a private school out in Yokohama because he hated living with me. But in the end, he still suffered.
And that's why you didn't hesitate to unleash hell on Mikoshiba?
If you say so.
So the first time Kawana showed up was when he let you listen to the phone call with Sawa-sensei, right?
Yes. He approached me and asked me if I still wanted justice for my son. I was in uniform when he came to me too. Very bold. But it paid off. I owe him a debt of gratitude. He reassured me he had already taken care of multiple individuals like Goshiba. And that he'd urged other families to avenge the children they lost to bullying. He'd tell them that simply being branded a bully wasn't enough. He promised to deliver real justice.
If justice can be served at one's own discretion, laws would cease to serve their function. If the law isn't fair to everyone, no one will obey it. The law is only able to help the powerless because it can't be swayed by money, force, or anything else.
Then tell me, what's the solution when the law fails to punish someone who laughs in its face? To overlook those the law won't judge is to abandon those the law couldn't protect.
To render justice with confidence, you require sufficient evidence.
Some of the victims' families refused Kawana's offer of revenge, telling him it would be unforgivable. But even after rejecting his offer, not a one reported Kawana-san to the police. Do you understand what that implies? Whether you follow through with revenge or not, Kawana-san presents a solution that resonates with people. Being that the law is unfair and imperfect. Am I wrong about that?
No, you're not. But we're fighting to make it as fair as we can. Laws have to change until they are perfect.
They don't change fast enough. Toshiro's death was murder by another name. Yet, Hiromi Kusiba walked free. He even got to enroll in a teaching program as a student-teacher. Someone like him? It's insane! I'd die of old age before the law was ever written to be fair enough. For Toshiro's sake, I can't turn a blind eye to a world where the Mikoshibas can live without consequence. Tell me, what alternative was there to getting blood on my hands? I didn't have any other choice!
Yagami-san, did he just...?
This is the first time you've admitted to killing Mikoshiba.
You really did your research? Unlike those useless cops. Kawana-san's plan was impressive. Almost airtight. I didn't expect it to be unraveled so quickly.
I just got lucky. There was some dirt on Yui Momia that Kawana could've used against her. If we hadn't found it, there's no way we would've gotten her to talk.
What are you talking about?
Sorry, but I'm under no obligation to tell you.
Ahara-san, you'll be sent to prison as a sex offender as it stands.
Of course. Just as I planned. The charges will be confirmed and I'll be convicted. As for the police and the prosecution, they wouldn't be able to admit they made a mistake. I could scream "I killed Mikoshiba" at the top of my lungs. It wouldn't matter.
Are you saying you intend to admit to the murder after you're released?
Everyone's seen the video of me killing Mikoshiba by now. It's obviously authentic, but the prosecution and the police are saying it's fake. They need it to be fake. Even if I do confess, they'll sweep it under the rug.
They wouldn't.
No, that's not beneath them. But I take it how they react doesn't really matter to you? All you want is to humiliate the law, don't you? The same system that determined Toshiro-kun's incident didn't happen.
It seems you're starting to understand, Yagami-san. If the prosecution wanted to charge me for Mikoshiba's murder, then they'd have to retract the battery verdict. And that would mean admitting to a massive blunder by the court at the hands of a criminal. It would be chaos. Despite knowing who murdered Mikoshiba, no one would know what to make of the case. Wouldn't that just be wonderful?
I hear you. And I even get why you'd feel pretty proud of accomplishing that.
Do you?
But in this case, the guys pretty much grabbed the tiger by the tail.
What tiger's tail?
Someone's issuing orders to the thugs in Kamurocho from behind the scenes. He's the tiger in this case. And they've been closing in on your partner Kawana. And Sawa-sensei got in their path. I'm sure you get the newspaper in here, right? You know, don't you? Sawa-sensei was killed after the thugs broke into her home. All because she got involved with Kawana.
Where she was killed... This is the first I'm hearing of the reason why. And by thugs, you mean RK?
Yeah, but we don't know why they're going after Kawana. Any ideas?
No way I'd know.
You think it could be because she got mixed up in your deadly little game?
Excuse me?
That's what getting away with murder really looks like. The more you perpetuate the lie, the greater the rift you create. And then, the unthinkable happens. Kawana killed others besides Mikoshiba. You said so yourself. That's what brought the angry tiger into play. And if Sawa-sensei ended up paying for that instead? Then how can you begin to believe your vengeance is fair?
Because she gave false testimony! She lied in court to say Toshiro was never bullied!
She couldn't name Mikoshiba, who was a minor at the time, without evidence. What's more, she was haunted by her testimony. Always second-guessing if she did the right thing. But now she's been killed. Somehow that's acceptable to you? I'm gonna clear up what happened to Sawa-sensei. Just like you did for Toshiro-kun.
How?
By going public with everything you and Kawana did. The first step is to appeal the sexual battery and undo this whole lie.
You never groped Yui Momia. That's one crime you're innocent of, Ahara-san. The court's verdict was incorrect. So please, give us the chance to appeal. We can prove your innocence.
What on earth would I get out of that?
You get to humiliate the court again. Besides, what are you gonna do for the next half a year in a cell?
Fine. Do what you want. But just know this.
Yes?
I have no intention of admitting to killing Mikoshiba in court. Is your appeal still worth a damn?
We won't know till we try. Let's go, Sarisun. We have client approval to perceive the appeal. We'd better act fast.
Yes, agreed.
Yagami-san, Sawa-sensei's death isn't on me. Even if I have grabbed the tiger by the tail, that doesn't mean I killed her.
By that logic, you may as well admit that Mikoshiba didn't kill Toshiro-kun. You can't have it both ways. Listen to me. Everything about you, about Kawana, about why Sawa-sensei had to die, we're gonna expose all of it. That's the only thing left we can do for her.
So then, Ahara admitted to killing Mikoshiba, did he?
Off the record, yeah. He also admitted Kawana approached him to offer revenge.
Sounds like you were productive.
It's enough for us to move forward with the appeal, I'd say. How does that sound, Genda-sensei?
Uh... Genda-sensei?
The sexual battery and Mikoshiba's murder are the very same case. To clear Ahara of harassment, you'll need to prove he murdered Mikoshiba. But you don't have evidence he did, do you?
Ahara-san was captured on video committing the murder.
And the prosecution claims it's a fake of unknown origins. The police are saying the same.
They're only saying that to cover their asses.
In reality, the sexual battery evidence against Ahara-san is what was really fake. At the very least, we can claim Yui Momia and the others aided in fabricating that, alibi or not.
You really think the courts will grant you an appeal for just that?
Are you saying that's not possible?
I wouldn't go that far. But Ahara won't admit to murdering Mikoshiba in court. Kinda significant, don't you think? So what chance do you have even if you do appeal? Without any decisive new evidence, you'll just end up splitting hairs over the original verdict. And what good'll it do other than damage your own reputation, Sarikun?
To be honest with you, I feel like I've been deeply underestimated.
What?
Sarisun, are you actually... mad?
Yes. As a matter of fact, I am.
You have every right to be!
Listen, sensei. Ahara and Kawana devised this plan knowing full well they could manipulate the justice system. Have we not fallen right into their trap? If we take pity on the prosecution now, we play right into their hand.
True.
So how can we worry about reputation when our duty as lawyers is to face the law?
I understand where you're coming from, and you're right to think it, but-
And another thing. While acting as Ahara's defense in the first trial, I never truly believed the claim. I didn't trust the person I was defending, and I felt sick to my stomach even being in the courtroom.
Sarisun...
Ahara likely saw right through that. He probably took great delight in our myopic dedication to the law. And I won't stand for that. I'm gonna show him exactly what I can do.
Hmm... What about you, Yagami? I wanna hear your thoughts.
I know what you're really saying, Genda-sensei. You're just worried about Sarisun's future, right?
That's right. She expects to defend a harassment case by proving a murder. What if she's biting off more than she can chew? Attacking the credibility of the police and prosecution already puts her at a disadvantage. And if she comes out of this with nothing, that's gonna follow her for all her life.
That's a valid concern.
Excuse me, can I ask you two why this is even a topic? Do neither of you have any sense of urgency?
Hey, why me?
Am I wrong? Then tell me what you're thinking here, Yagami-san.
Yeah. Let's hear it already.
We should listen to Sarisun. I understand why Ahara and Kawana did what they did. I can't condone it.
I see. So you feel it too, huh?
Yes. Although my motivation may not be as righteous as Sarisun's.
Hmm... What do you mean?
Mikoshiba's murder, the fake groping alibi... The one behind it all was Kawana, and he's in hiding. We need to shine enough light on him that the public can see what he is. And the perfect place to do it is during Ahara's appeal hearing.
So it's not Ahara you're after, but Kawana?
If we pursue Ahara's case, Kawana-san's actions will naturally come to light.
And if we draw out Kawana, then RK and the ones backing them will make their move. Soma from RK said Sawa-sensei knew too much. Which means whoever's behind them has a secret that needs to stay buried. Even if it means murder. And I need to figure that secret out. I owe Sawa-sensei that closure. The only thing we can do for her now is make sure the ones pulling the strings pay for it.
Well said. I guess going back wasn't ever really an option.
Genda-sensei!
Looks like I got complacent from all the peace and quiet. Leave it to me to underestimate the younger generation.
I apologize. I shouldn't have been so impertinent.
That should be my line, Sarikun. I suppose I have to make up my mind after all that, don't I? Get out there and do what needs to be done. And heaven help anyone in your way.
Yeah!
Right.
Yep.
You heard him.
Hello?
Yagamishi, are you still in Kamurocho?
Yeah, why? What's up?
I'm afraid RK seems to be amassing in Ijincho. It's very bizarre.
Are they now?
Yeah. I can't shake the feeling that the officers like Soma and Akutsu are still in town.
You think so? If I was Soma, I'd have left Ijincho by now. He's a person of interest in Sawa-sensei's murder too.
I see. That does make sense.
Things are settling into place here, though. I'm heading back to Ijincho with Sugira. We got a lot to go over with you when I get back.
Hehe! Wonder what it could be? Okay, see you soon then. Okay, see you soon then.